I'm sorry, I'm a super person, I like creep in on you.
That's okay. That is okay.
All right, good evening. I'll now call this September 4th, 2025 Board Work Session to Order. Can we start with the district mission read by Dr. Larson?
The mission of the School District of Haverford Township is to educate and to inspire a community of lifelong learners who become well-rounded global citizens.
Thank you, Ms. Lee, for the goals.
District goals: Academic excellence in an evolving world. Prepare future-ready learners who persevere, adapt, problem-solve, think critically, and are supported by engaging learning experiences and intentional use of technology. Belonging: To honor every individual's inherent dignity through equitable, inclusive, and diverse practices. Social/Emotional Growth: Build a learning community that prioritizes social/ emotional wellness as a foundation for academic success, resilience, and strong relationships. Community Pride and Civic Engagement: Empower students to be active, responsible, and contributing citizens through shared responsibility and community partnerships.
Thank you. As a board, we value diverse viewpoints and act as advocates to make decisions in the best interest of students. In order to further inclusive practices and increase community engagement and board cohesion, we are moving to a two-board meeting a month process, in which we will engage in one Board Work Session and one Board Action Meeting. The Board Work Session will be the first meeting of the month. At the beginning of the meeting, we will have some limited agenda items to conduct routine business, such as personnel matters, financial approvals, and people's service matters that may need consideration before the second meeting. These items will be deliberated and voted upon by board members as official actions. When the short action portion of the meeting is completed, we will transition into the work session portion that will consist of presentations from the administration and our consultants with discussions amongst the board, more similar to what previously occurred at our committee meetings. No official action will be taken during the work portion of the meeting. The second meeting of the month will be the Board Action Meeting, where official action by vote will be taken on items after a chance for board member deliberations. We intend to use a consent-agenda process at the action meeting each month to streamline the process of approving items that have been considered and discussed thoroughly during the work portion of the prior meetings. We will continue to hold two public comment sections at each meeting. We believe this approach is aligned with our district goals of belonging and civic pride and community engagement, and will allow for a collective, informed, and inclusive decision-making process. Tonight's meeting is a Board Work Meeting. We have a few items at the beginning for consideration and action, followed by a work session, where no official action will be taken. We will announce when moving from the action section to the work session. Mr. Saxo, recall the role, please.
Ms. Lee? Dr. McKay? Mr. Schwartz? Dr. Shelton? Ms. Snodgrass?
Here.
Ms. Vitale?
Here.
Ms. Wedeman?
Here.
Dr. Larson?
Here.
Dr. King?
Present. Uh, Dr. McKay is out due to illness. So before we receive public comment on the agenda items before the Board for Action at tonight's meeting, I need to make an announcement to clarify one of those items. Item 3C includes a motion to approve payment of the bill list in the amount of $1,919,355.49. That amount includes disbursements of $1,213,851.71 from the general fund for the 25-26 year, $72,640 for the district capital projects, and $632,843.78 from the bond capital fund for a total amount of $1,919,335.49. Attached to the agenda are three account registers that provide the details of all the expenditures that total $1,919,355.49 and a summary table. Last night, when the agenda for this meeting was posted to the public, the three account registers listing the expenditures totaling $1,919,335.49 were included and made accessible for public view. However, the summary chart was not the summary chart current for this meeting. This clerical error was corrected this morning, so the summary chart in the agenda now matches the expenditures listed in the three account registers that were posted for the public review yesterday. There has been no change to the expenditure amounts nor the expenditure items from what was posted yesterday. We apologize for this clerical error and any confusion that it may have caused. So we're going to continue now to Section 2, which is Public Comment. So there are two opportunities for public comment in the meeting. The first opportunity for public comment, board community members may make a comment or statement about items listed for a vote listed on the meeting agenda only. During the second public comment, community members may make a comment or statement about any school-related topic. I did not have anyone that signed up for this section of public comments, so we will continue. Section 3, which is Items Before the Board for Action. So we have three items on the agenda for approval by consent vote. Does any member wish to remove an item from the consent vote for this discussion? All right, so here are none. I will ask for a motion to approve Items B through D as listed on the agenda.
Snodgrass moved.
Vitale second.
Moved and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. So that concludes the action portion of the meeting. We are now moving into the working portion of the meeting, in which items are being provided for information and discussion purposes. Please note that none of the items discussed are being considered for official action at this time. So for Section 4, that takes us to Committee Reports. 4A is Policy and Personnel. Ms. Snodgrass?
Thanks, and I think I'll actually hand it to Dr. Hayes, because what we're not doing tonight is going over any specific policies, because we have not decided, or haven't looked at those yet and revise what the next batch will be. But instead, we're reviewing the policies that we have already taken a look at during our policy audit and then deciding where to go next. So I guess just briefly, I'll give a recap of the policy audit, which started about two years ago. We're going through our entire policy book to make sure that all of our policies are continuously reviewed and updated as they should be and aligned with the current practice of the district, as well as current law and best practices. So it really has given us a chance to review the policies, to make sure that they, that we are transparent with the community, that our policies that are posted align with the practices that are within the district. And oftentimes, it's also allowed us to learn about new best practices. And so we've been, had the opportunity to adopt new policies that we didn't, didn't have prior to this audit because they were best practice. So this is just a continuation of the audit to see where we are and where we want to go.
Thank you. As Ms. Snodgrass stated, we're really looking at the policy review calendar, what's being proposed, attached to the agenda for tonight. As you can see, are a number of policies that the committee has already engaged in. Since 2022, the committee has already reviewed and revised over 100 policies for our school district. In looking at the policies that have been reviewed and revised, we've looked at continuing that discussion tonight to ensure that we're able to thoroughly address and identify policies based on timeliness and relevance. The policy calendar that was attached is ordered in a similar fashion in terms of mirroring a trimester, which should allow for fluidity in terms of being able to address and discuss policies that may come up as mandated by law or legislative changes, but also allow us to strategically go through and ensure that our policies match our procedures and that we are, we are making sure that we have the right things in place for our staff, our students, and our community members. So we've arranged this policy calendar in association with time with school matters, such as reviewing enrollment guidelines during the start of the year. You'll see on there one of the policy suggestions for revision during the, during the fall time, spring timeline would be for the AED and CPR policy. We just recently, at last meeting, received approval for training for AEDs and CPR, so that matches up, making sure that our policies support our procedures and vice versa. So it's not an exhaustive list, it's just a proposed calendar to ensure that policies that are important are being addressed, while also making sure that we continue addressing policies that come up in timely manners. And with that, if there's any further information from Ms. Snodgrass or from any other members regarding the detailed context of policies to review over the course of this school year and beyond, we can certainly open that up for discussion.
Yeah, thanks. I think it's really important to have goals and a timeline for when we want to review our policies, and especially, Dr. Hayes said, the, you know, making sure that we're reviewing them in a timely way so that they are effective for when we need them, but also, this is, should not only be not an exhaustive list, but things can be changed around. And so this wouldn't be something that would be like the bible for our policies, to make sure that we review them exactly in this, in this order or in this timeframe, because we've had laws change, we've had practices change, we've, you know, our administrators take part in, in their learning, and they, and they come back with, you know, additional best practices that we weren't aware of. We have PSBA that recommends new best practices all the time. So we have a really good resource that, that we don't even know yet maybe what's on the horizon and what we would need to do at what time. So want to leave ourselves that flexibility to do that as well, but I do think that it's a good idea to just take a look holistically at the, at the next year and see, you know, if nothing else changes, you know, these are, these are good goals for us to review these policies around these timeframes.
Just want to say that I really appreciate the fact that the Policy 819 Suicide Prevention Awareness and Response, which was revised, I'm going to say in October 2023, with guidance from PSBA and state regulations, that we're finally going to have that. I had asked previous board leadership and previous administration for us to look at that, and I know other board members had interest as well. It is really important for our students, considering the impact of social/ emotional wellness and mental health, so I very much appreciate that it is on this list to be addressed in the winter.
Yeah, I think this calendar is really useful. One, one thing I, when I interact with the community, there's certain things that they would like to be, have addressed. One of them is electronic devices, which was last adopted in 1999. So I don't know what consideration we might have on, in terms of the priority order. I think, I think there was a goal previously stated that we might review all the policies in a certain schedule, make sure they're updated on a certain time. But that, that's just one that I, that's brought to my attention.
Yeah, just, um, so in kind of stepping things out, that policy can be under consideration. One of the policies, you know, in structuring this 76.1, for example, looking at the disposal of district-owned property, making sure that we have the right administrative regulations in line. So you'll also see with certain policy revision proposals, the accompanying ARs that has at, on the administrative level, will be revising and tackling to pair with the policy changes that the board would wish to make. And then those would collectively help inform future policy revisions as well. So trying to make sure that policies line up. Sometimes we may have to group policies together that are applicable across multiple categories, and just being really intentional, again, that the policies we revise and the procedures we put in place are really aligned with each other and allow for efficient, school-friendly implementation, as well as community transparency.
Just to piggyback onto what Dr. Shelton said, there, there, there is in the draft policies, PSBA policy, four, four policy, two, two, three, seven, five, places. So that one, that one's a bit more update, that one, I think was like, probably 2015, I believe, was when it was first written by PSBA, so we wouldn't start from scratch if we were doing a review of, of transplaces. And that's one that I guess, but constantly as well. So I would just to second that, that, that one should be put on the radar sooner than later.
Yeah, some of the policies, you're right, are in draft form, so some policies are kind of easier lifts, because they're just language or legality revisions, rather than in-depth focus. And again, structuring it out to make sure that we're tackling some similar ones, also really diving into the, to the complexity of other ones that may be more impactful.
I think one of the things that I appreciate about this list is having a review of policies that's already been explored. I think that's helpful, not only for board members, but also for members of the community. And I know that the work that goes into reviewing policies, oftentimes, if you look at one policy, you're going to be looking at several others. And so having this sort of plan, I think, keeps us all on track with, with what are the policies that are leaned together and help us to be intentional with our review. But also, as community members are wondering what policies are coming up, what things can be reviewed, it's, it's, it's clear, it's posted, certainly, it's not edge in stone, as Ms. Snodgrass pointed out, but it certainly gives us a direction to go to, go through with the board.
So I don't know if you have anything else to add, but just again, this is the proposed calendar, obviously amenable to changes as things come up, but just really intended to guide the work, to make sure we're continuing with that policy work, and include collective voice for it, so.
Yeah, absolutely, I agree, and I appreciate the suggestions from my colleagues for the additional review. Dr. Shelton, our aim was to try and review every policy once every five years. Um, it's, it's a little bit impractical, just because of the number of policies we have, and as you can see, maybe not in the last two years, but since we've started this, we've reviewed some policies a couple times, just because those have changed. Either, you know, best practices have changed, maybe that's why we virtually made the policy, but then the law changed, and then we had to change it again. So, you know, we're, we're trying to keep on some sort of calendar to, for once every five years, but we haven't even gone through all of our policy book yet since we started, so we're not quite there yet. But, you know, at the same time, I don't think everyone wants to be talking about policy all of the time, so we also want to be, you know, mindful of, of what we're going over at each one and make sure that we can take bite-sized chunks so that they can really be considered and, and have deliberative conversation around them. So, but I do appreciate the suggestions and, and, you know, we'll, you know, take a look at that.
Yeah, I think having a calendar helps, you know, prepare and have the discussion. Yeah, that's just, I just cited one example that has come up. And I, I think if there are ways that we can streamline, like we were talking about the number of readings, I agree, it's very ambitious, because there are a lot of policies.
All right, so thank you, Ms. Snodgrass and Dr. Hayes, as well as for the other board members, I think we had a, a healthy discussion there. We're going to continue on with 4B, which is Academic and People's Services. Dr. Larson?
Thank you, Dr. King. I'll open it now for discussion and information from Ms. Saxo and her team. First, we have Educational Service Agreements, which are proposed actions for the 91825 Board Meeting. Is there any additional information you could provide, Ms. Saxo?
None for me yet, none for my colleagues, that's telling. These are the typical kinds of approvals that we need to see.
Okay. Then moving, I'm sorry, any questions from the board on number one? Okay. Moving on to number two, looking at out-of-district replacement, proposed action again for the 91825 meeting. We have two items here, one for green tree school and for foundations behavioral health.
Again, typical agreements that you would normally see, so just provide information to the board that you will see them at our upcoming action meeting.
Great, and those two are attached here on the agenda, so if board members have any questions that we might be able to address. Seeing none, we'll move on. Okay, and then lastly, we have an update on the reading development tutoring program for Manoa Elementary.
Yes, so, uh, thank you, and many thanks to Mrs. Christina Carter, who arranged for us to learn a little bit more information about this program, and is going to start us off with a little bit of an update on what we've learned since the great questions that you posed at our last meeting.
Thank you. So in our work session in August, we worked forward the Institute of Reading Development Program. You all had very thoughtful questions, so we wanted to bring them in for us to be able to ask some more detailed questions, have a presentation, and just be sure that we knew everything we needed to know based off of the questions that you shared. So one of the questions that came up during that time was around, how do they monitor the progress of students? So they actually do weekly updates for the principal of the district, like, parents with a weekly update around the progress of the student who is participating within the program. They also provide a time on test, so we know if they're actually utilizing the program that is intended, or if it's just they're sitting there idle and not doing anything at all. So that, that was helpful for us to hear. With addition, that they also provide a post-program, so like, a student may not need the program the whole time. So when they're done with the program, maybe growth, and met what we needed them to meet, then we would get a post-program update about how that student performed. And they did assure us in our call that we can reach out at any point in time if we have any questions, to be able to get an update on how students are doing, or if they realize that they're struggling to get in contact with the family or a student, they reach out to us to make sure that we're aware and we could touch base with the family as well. The other question that was asked, and we kind of talked through, was around data. So we have an MOU that we have signed with the company, and we asked a lot of questions, Dr. Hayes asked some of the really detailed questions to get in depth and get into the weeds of what was happening with our student data, and ensuring that they were not selling our student data, and there were no third parties who would be advertising to our students. So we're very comfortable with being able to move forward with that, and that they will only have contact with the tutors and the programming that they need throughout the time. Another question was around who's doing the instruction. So they actually provide live tutors, so it is a synchronous piece over the computer, so the students will have their Chromebooks, and they would actually be able to get that one-on-one time, or sometimes they have a four-to-one small group that students will have access to, depending on their level of need. So they do have highly qualified, Mr. Tustin's been working to make sure we have all the background checks and all of the things needed, so that we're making sure our students are with the best individuals possible who are receiving the program. And just to reassure you that it's not a company that is brand-new to the area, they have actually worked in the state of Pennsylvania for about 10 years, with a total of 56 years in general in history. So although they may be a Californian company, we looked at the, in Boise or from before, they actually work with Temple University, and they have worked with others within the state of Pennsylvania, have a history of it. So that is about it. Oh, I wanted to touch base with one of the four pillars. I thought that was very helpful, that they shared with us about how they create their tutoring program. So their four pillars, the way the program is structured is, they have live classes, which are the lessons. They also have lessons and activities, which include books that are mailed out to the students, so that they actually have real books in their hand, and they're not just things that are on devices as they're trying to read, so that, that made us very comfortable to know that they would have, as a reading specialist myself, I like book handling, so they actually give real books in their hands, so that made me happy. And they also have independent reading and writing practice that they do with that one-to-one or one-to-four time where they work with the students. So that's about it. If you have any other questions, I will be happy to.
So I just had a question, but just to recap for people who might not have been here, this is supplemental, that this, it's Manoa Elementary School, these students are all getting reading intervention at Manoa Elementary School by our, our teachers. This is extra because we had extra money that we had to use that they would be doing after school, virtually, but synchronous, they would be with a live tutor in a small group. So that was very helpful to confirm all that. So you said that we'll be able to check, you know, if they're actually participating, if they're just, how often will the district, or I don't know if it's you in charge, or whoever, be monitoring, like, okay, this person, this child, or is never logging in, and they should be logging in, or they're logging in once a week instead of four times a week? How often do we plan on monitoring this?
So they said that they provide the weekly communication, so our building principal will be receiving that, so they can stay on top of it, and we have our reading specialist at the school as well. But I did ask about, like, if we had questions, Ms. Saxo and I would be able to get that report, so then we can follow up on top of it from our end to see if there's any, like, challenge or barrier that might prevent the student from being able to access that we may be able to help figure out.
Okay, great.
So like, for example, if they may struggle with wifi, or something like that, we can kind of think through what that barrier is with their families.
Or it could be something as simple, they're not home yet from school, and the time is, okay, perfect, thank you.
So I just had one question, Ms. Carter, and I know you've explained this previously, but for the sake of the public, can you talk a little bit about as to why this program is specific to Manoa Elementary?
Oh, sure, absolutely. So I probably should have started with this, so thank you for the reminder. So the reason why we are working with this program is because we have additional Title I funding that is specifically aligned to Manoa from our 23-24 school year that rolled over into the 24-25 school year, and we have to use it and engage students in something before September 30th. So we looked for options, and our building principal found this program that she thought would be very helpful. be very helpful as addition to, as we were saying, to the strong instruction that's happening from our teachers, so that students can have the additional support as they go through.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Carter, are they using a structured literacy approach? Because I know that's a big initiative and push in Pennsylvania.
So, I'm going to hand it over to Ms. Saxa, because she asked those detailed questions. She was very excited to ask those.
Yes, I was. I was very aware of making sure that students are learning after school the same kinds of things they're learning in school, right? We don't want them to become confused by, wait a minute, we do it differently there. And they are aligned with structured literacy. There is, these are going to be our younger students, so it is aligned with how we use foundations and how we explore everything from phoneme segmentation to phonics to, or reading fluency and so forth. So, they are doing a similar approach to what we're doing, and I felt satisfied that it would not present any kind of issue for our students in participating with.
And I guess this is related to data sharing, but how are our teachers of district communicating students' reading needs to the tutoring program to make sure that they're getting the level of support that they need, rather than maybe skills that they've already mastered or above where they need to be?
They do give their own pre-test as well, so they have a pre-test that they give, and then it's a related post-test. And then they make available to the teacher the information that they are tutoring in, or the information that they're sharing with the child, and then the teacher could have some contact with the child and the parent, but they wouldn't necessarily be reaching out directly to the tutors or anything like that.
And I understand this is like one bucket of money, one time, but I think it would be helpful to look at this kind of as a pilot, because I think there could be an equity issue with some of our students who may have similar literacy needs that are not at Manoa. And I can speak from experience, the cost of tutoring in literacy is prohibitive. So, related to this, like, any outreach you could do to families, just really let them know that this is an incredible opportunity and will potentially save them thousands of dollars.
That's sort of the thing we were saying after hearing the presentation, was, you know, I know we only have this right now, but seems like it's really good. This will be a good way for us to pilot and see if it's as effective as stated, and we see the results here in this district, because it's definitely a very appealing offering that would be lovely to be able to share out wider, in a wider way.
The other thing that I wanted to add for you, when you were asking about, do they communicate the needs for the students? In addition, like, if our students do have an IEP, they do work with us on the SDIs for the students, so that that can be addressed as well.
Can you just refresh my memory? Does, do we have this program at Manoa just till the end of the calendar year or the school year? I forget, I'm sorry.
It's to the end of our academic calendar.
Okay, thank you.
Just touch base real quick on the Title I for community members and all. I appreciate you saying, it is kind of a one-time bucket of money that we get. It's not necessarily always built into our budget. It's federally funded, but it also comes with some constraints. Sometimes students or families who receive Title I funding may have limited technology needs, technology access at home. We were intentional to ask, talking with Mr. Anderson and Ms. Carter, if students would need technology, obviously it needs a curriculum need, we would be able to provide that for them. So, that limited access at home is not an impediment for their participation.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, Dr. King, I'll turn it back to you.
Great, thank you, Dr. Larson. We'll continue with item four C, which is facilities. I will turn it over to Ms. Peter.
Thank you. We have one agenda item about updates on our facilities, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Testa to introduce our guest speakers.
So, Ken Matthews and Jeff Strahl. Jeff is the architect, and Ken is oversight on the project. Can you give us some dates on the agenda?
I'll start off quick. Good evening, everyone. So, for Chatham, good news, the building opened, as I said last time. We couldn't have done it without JR and his staff, so really appreciate that. Seriously. They were, they're unbelievable. I would have, I don't know what I would have done without them. But, the building opened, it looks amazing. Little pieces, you know, continue to get done on a daily basis. We'll have probably about a month-ish of finishing work, doing punch lists, getting all that stuff done. So, we will be working at night, there's flooring guys there right now, working some weekends, but it should clean up and get even that much more done quickly, things that, you know, a lot of people won't even notice. So, it really, it really turned out well. It was a, it was a difficult August, but it really came together. So, the workers did, did a great job as well. They worked, they worked a lot of weekends, but they got it done. So, it's great news. So, I know tonight, we're here with the presentation. Jeff is here from Crabtree, just to kind of walk through some of the budget items we talked about. I don't have a specific budget update this evening, you know, as we spoke at the last meeting, there's some funds being carried over from Cooper Town to Chatham. And then, you know, I'm hoping that we can have final estimates here and see where we are by the end of the month, as the last of the changes trickle in, and we get to a final budget. So, hopefully for the eighteenth, but it may end up being at that first meeting in October with a true budget update. So, that being said, Jeff, why don't you go ahead and walk through the presentation?
Okay. And do I just? Okay, we're just going to do sort of some, sort of where were we a year ago when the bids originally came in for the project, and where are we at right now? And along with JR's team, the contractors, Ken and his team at CD Development, just, you know, really sort of leading that whole construction team and getting everybody across the finish line for the start of school. So, what you're seeing up on the screen is just, we had reviewed this a year ago when the bids came in, and actually what it was sort of a spreadsheet looking at, not just base bid, but what were sort of components. For instance, the middle school was added to the project as an alternate, as well as a series of other alternates, everything from tack boards to potential roofing or types of flooring throughout the project. Ultimately, that equated then to the total budget for each of the contractors that you see up on the screen for, for general construction, HVAC, plumbing, electrical, and roughly ended up at about twenty-six million dollars. And we also had a contingency of one-point-five million dollars for the project. We've been tracking against those numbers now, then, for the, for the past year. And what you're seeing on the screen now is, it's very similar to what Ken presents to you on a regular basis, but, because really throughout the project, you have both the architectural team, the construction management team continually monitoring the progress of everybody, and then we continually go back and forth between our teams, just making sure everything is accounted for throughout the project. And so, up on the screen, you see the original contract, change orders for each of the four prime contractors, with actually the mechanical and electrical both being the same contractors. So, really, we had three contractor, or three prime contracts on site. In the green, you've got the total contract to date, once those change orders are accounted for. And I would note, some of these numbers are very fluid and may be slightly off from Ken's numbers, or what has present, be presented for board approval, and that's because the pay, pay applications for contractors are continually coming in. And so, what we tried to do for the presentation this evening is, if you'll see on the very far right highlighted in yellow, we went on just in the past few days and pulled off the contractor's most recent pay application. So, and it says, two of the contractors, August pencils, that means their preliminary pay applications, and then two of them actually haven't submitted their, their August pay applications yet for even for review, so we have their July final pay applications that were processed. The takeaway, when you look at all that, is roughly the projects are about ninety-four, ninety-five percent complete with payments that had been submitted at this time, which is what you see in the yellow in the middle. And then, to the right of that is the retainage, and we're, right now, we're holding about one-point-two million dollars on the contractors. And so, that's the verify that everything is fully installed correctly in the project. And before that retainage is released to the contractors, we'll verify, which Ken mentioned, we're going, one of the things, large things that we're going through right now is punch lists, verifying that everything was installed properly and what the contractors have to do to wrap up the project. There's some larger areas, for instance, the gymnasium, that's still a lot of work to go in, in those areas, but then there's also just touch-up work, for instance, in classrooms and things that, that have to be addressed before that retainage can get fully released to each of the contractors. Okay. So, including the retainage plus what's owed, there's still about two-point-seven million dollars for the contractors out there. Also, what you see on this sheet is the bottom left is we're track, we're tracking contract days for the project, and this is, we actually track substantial completion and then final completion. And what, right now, there's four-hundred-and-seventy-one days to final completion, so that means everything's been addressed, the punch list that I just mentioned. And so, we're tracking that right now. It's, we're about ninety-one percent. So, as Ken mentioned, really, we're going through about another thirty days, thirty, forty days to really, till everything's addressed. And throughout the project now, there is some anomalies, for instance, the gymnasium that I mentioned, that is sort of falling outside of that, just for some of the things that's being addressed. Then what you're seeing to the right, to the bottom right, is us tracking on the contingency. A few of the following pages are going to be much more detailed, just sort of showing the level of what we've been looking throughout the entire project, but this is sort of summary. On the previous slide, we had showed about one-and-a-half million dollars for contingency, so we're tracking that. There's also allowances that the contractors had to be utilized during construction. There's seventy thousand dollars worth of that remaining, so about one-point-five-seven, and we've used about seventy-six percent of that. But at the same, at this time, we're also in process, about a little over fifty thousand dollars of change orders that have been processed, and the contractors will be submitting in their upcoming pay applications. And then we also have about another two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand that's under review right now. And I think that takes us right up to about just under ninety-six percent complete, or utilizing all of our contingency, and I think that's where, in some of the follow-up slides, what Ken and discussions have been with, with the board level of transferring some money into the contingency fund if needed, as we, as we wrap up the project, just to, to be.
To be clear, will be.
Will be, yes, yeah. So, that's sort of a summary, and we can go back, and I can answer any questions that you would have. This following slide, not that we're going to go on every, every item up on the screen, but I think what we wanted to show, and we had discussions with the administration, was this is the overall tracking document of every change order on the project. Roughly, it's eight pages, and there's quite a lot of time spent. Sometimes, change orders will be a month or a few months in discussion before it does come to the board for a final approval, either bouncing back and forth with the contract, contractors, even though we're trying to work within that contingency fund that we're, we're having supplemented a little bit. We take it very serious, unfortunately. You do have change orders, and none of us like to see that, but because of that, we track everyone very closely before it's finally approved and ready to come, come forward to all of you. The next slide is just an excerpt from, from those pages, and so, along with sort of a general description, and then each of these lines actually translates typically to a two-to-three-page document, along with supplemental backup from contractors. But we'll be tracking the price, will also be, is it, is it under review, is it ready to go to the school board for approval, processing with the contractors, is it an owner request, is it an unforeseen condition, is it a mission, something that was not included in the documents, and quite frankly, was there an error by the design team? And an error typically is when something's installed and that has to be redone, and we will typically step up and take some ownership to that. In fact, I think there's a few of them that we've been discussing with Ken's team. So, we track all those across the board and review them periodically with, with the district and the construction management team. Okay? Ken, I can either jump into this, but really, I wanted to.
So, we, you know, as part of, this is our recommendation, this is just kind of a reminder of the, these items that occurred at Chatham that we know are not going to occur at Cooper Town. So, that, this was just kind of a summary, just a lot of things. Site utility work, you know, we replaced the whole water line at Chatham that was never originally in the job. Cooper Town has all new water lines to the building, so that's not going to be a cost. Cooper Town already has a gym, so, you know, just that alone, I mean, the gym, you could see is a hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars alone, to even more than that, actually, at this point. So, that's why we just wanted to show this for context, that, you know, you have six-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars of changes that are, you know, are not going to happen at, at Cooper Town, because it was either picked up in the documents, or it's just a different building, and these things aren't happening. So, that, that was the point of this, and this was in the memo we had sent back in the end of July, I believe.
And is this part of the, sorry to interrupt, was this part of the slide deck that was shared with the board? I only ask because we don't seem to have it in our deck.
This was an updated, added slide, so we'll make sure you have the updated presentation.
Can I just ask, were the plans, the design reviewed for Cooper Town? If, what I'm understanding is that there was potentially some, some design errors or missed facets to the project at Chatham Park, so was the design, did that have a second review, or probably more than second, but additional review to make sure that none of those problems were there themselves at Cooper Town?
On Cooper Town or Chatham?
No. It appears that there were some design issues at Cooper Town, and so, or at Chatham Park, so my question is, was anything done to ensure that there's no design issues going forward at Cooper Town?
Yes, but I want to add to that, too. There are, we went through extensive reviews on Chatham Park, we did on Cooper Town as well, but there are, unfortunately, there's always going to be, you know, we're human beings, putting together a one-of-a-kind set of documents, so we are going to run into those. However, I would, would note that there was a lot of feeding information as we were running into things at Chatham Park over the last year. That was, that was being directly brought to the Cooper Town design team, and then we were incorporating those into the documents. So, I think, and that's part of, you know, what you're seeing up on the screen. So, for instance, some of the wall repairs in the classrooms, that was something that was, was picked up from what lessons learned that we were, we were seeing at Chatham Park. Another component is, we had much stronger doc, existing documentation on Cooper Town. Frankly, about half of the building for Chatham Park, we didn't have, we had very limited existing condition drawings, it was just the nature of the age of the building, where Cooper, or with Cooper Town, it was much more extensive. So, I think that's part of, so to answer your question, I guess, very directly, yes, the lessons learned was being incorporated from Chatham Park into Cooper Town. We have a few others, a few other slides, but they're more for reference purposes, the existing site plan and floor plans, just if there was anything specific that the board wanted to discuss, we could go to those specifically, but really more opening up to questions, or we can jump back to any slides for discussion that you would like to have.
I had a question about the documentation on Chatham, and do we have any plans to sort of digitize or try to rectify? And I know some of our buildings go back a long time. Is that one of the learnings you took away, or?
One thing that you will, at the end of the project, there'll be as-built drawings that'll come out from the contractors, and that, that really will be, typically, that will be digitized and then kept by the district. And that's probably a lessons learned, and it's not just, it's not picking on Chatham Park, it's just, that's the nature. You see it with school districts throughout the state of Pennsylvania, really, actually throughout the country. It's very often that, you know, the documents that are kept from forty, fifty, sixty years ago, they just sometimes don't, no longer exist. That is the advantage that you have with digitizing. You will now have those as-built drawings, and then that'll be a resource that the district will have moving forward.
Okay. I guess just a follow-up question is, where do we keep these old, I mean, where does the district keep the documentation?
So, you know, electronic files for everything are turned over, so there's an electronic copy, PDFs, thousands of pages of every piece of equipment, carpet, ceiling tile, light that went into the building, so there's that, and then we have a printed copy that's turned over, and then the drawings are turned over as well. A lot of it is kept either in the building. A lot of it is kept either in the building, or of course, the electronic version as well.
The older documents from, you know?
Yeah, a lot of the older documents, they're all housed in the high school and on the basement. All the original documents are all labeled and in barrels from, you know, 1903 and on. So, yes, there's a lot of them. I think the one thing, just to kind of answer the question a little bit more, Chatham, as I had mentioned, there was a lot of demo scarring, I'll call it, old walls, things falling apart as we cut into them, door frames, so there was, there was just a lot of that that really kind of existing old conditions that had to be dealt with. That's difficult to, to really document.
I think that I didn't have there were the blackboards and tech boards were installed, and then there was no wall behind them, that's.
No finished, no finished wall, so not, not, no finished part. So, at Coop, Chatham Park, we surveyed it, checked it, it was the same very strange construction, so now those walls, it was included to cover that. So, that's an example of, you know, a hundred-plus thousand dollars of work saved, but now it's built into Cooper Town's project already.
I just wanted to ask Mr. Strub, we've worked with you for years on other projects. I think this was the first time in my tenure on the board, this is my eighth year, that we've really seen larger issues than anticipated, some related to the architectural side. I appreciate that you're here this evening, and thankfully, we were able to open our school on time. Thank you to Mr. Matthews and his team and his work, and to our facilities team, but I'm concerned that it took until September 4th for us to actually see and hear from you in person, and I would love for you to explain to this board why we had not heard from you in person throughout this entire fiasco. I'm going to call it a fiasco, because it was. It truly was, and we are grateful that everything worked out and is working out, but for me personally, I would like to have my confidence reinstated that we can not go through this same thing when it comes to Cooper Town. I understand there's lessons learned, but there were some mess-ups, and I do think this board is owed an explanation.
I'm, I'm fine answering that question. The short of it is, and I apologize, actually, I was going to, to back up the administration, there had been a request for us to come this, this summer. I, quite frankly, I apologize, I was on vacation, I just couldn't, couldn't make that meeting. But why, why weren't we here before that? That's simply, we were not requested to, to come to a previous meeting, you know, if the, you know, moving forward with Cooper Town, if you would want us to report every three months, or, you know, come and show up with Ken, I'm more than willing to do that. Just, the district just needs to give me notification, and I'll, I'll schedule that. And I, and I want to be careful, I don't want to play down the change orders, you know, whether it's a thousand dollars or $10,000 or whatever the amount is, we take everyone serious, every dollar amount serious, as well as I'm sure you do to your constituents. But we are within the error of margin of what you would typically expect to see, change orders on, on the project. We are human beings putting together a one, one-of-a-kind set of documents, and sometimes we, we discover a lot of unforeseen or hidden conditions, especially in additions or renovation project. That's why the, the contingency is actually a little bit higher typically on a project like this, and in fairness, the, or, and thanks to the construction management team, we were actually initially looking at maybe having the contingency a little bit lower, and it was recommended to keep it higher because of the potential for unforeseen conditions, which, which occurred here. Each project is, is difficult. Sometimes, you, you don't hit a lot of change orders. In this case, we did, we did hit quite a, quite a number of them, and we, we did try to, to categorize those into, into, into the different categories. But some of them, so again, I would be more than willing to sit down maybe separately with the administration, if we want any follow-up with all of you, we could do that, but felt that the unforeseens, I think we were right around 1.2, 1.4 percent, which is, depending on who you talk to, the industry standard can be 3% to 5%, so I felt that we were within an error of margin, but still, I don't like to even come with that percentage and have to, to answer those hard questions for you. And again, more than willing on Cooper Town to, for us to come and present to you more often, but a lot of times, it is the, the construction management team or the owners' representative, a lot of times, is doing that presentation to the board, so.
And I just want to follow up on Dr. Larson's comment, and so that the board knows, one of the things that I asked of Dr. Hayes, and for him to share with the administration, is that when we're having any sort of third-party vendor outside organization that we're having formal presentations, and so we should be seeing slides regularly, we should have very formal, clear updates. I recognize that our committee meetings are more informal, but we're still conducting business, and so I want to make sure that the presentations that we're receiving are, are provided as such, that we're able to ask questions, that we're able to read information, and certainly have a regular, consistent follow-up. So, I do look forward to consistent follow-ups as we continue going ahead.
Could I ask you to go to slide number five in my packet? That's the prime contractor payment log, and it's got different colors in the box with the, that one, yes. I, in my professional job, work on facility financing, understand this is a time with stresses and pressures on budgets and see contingency being used at a higher rate than in prior years. So, appreciate the, you know, that that's just kind of the state of the construction sector these days. I do have an issue with a presentation, I wouldn't want, because it's my understanding that this project has gone over budget, and we actually needed to reallocate additional dollars to top off the funds that we had designated for Chatham Park, and this slide makes it look like 95.7 percent of the contingency is used, and that makes it sound like there might be dollars left over, and that's not the case, so if we could be clear in presenting the total cost, and that this is, is one that has an over, overage, one that we were able to handle by transferring other capital funds from the bond dollars that we raised, but I just want one, the board or the community to look at this and understand that there were, there was kind of savings on this project when we've allocated additional dollars.
And if I can add a little bit more emphasis to that, and I did try to say it earlier, but maybe it didn't come across quite clear, what this is doing is taking the contractors' pay application logs along, along with what change orders they have formally submitted, and I had said this was in process, so it doesn't exactly match up to the construction manager's information, along with what's been submitted to the district, because it's sort of a very fluid process. I'm trying to go off of their most recent pay application, so for instance, good, very good point of, for what they've submitted, we're at 76% of the contingency, what has been approved, and they should be submitting this month, we would go up to just under 80%. And then change orders that have, that have, the paperwork has started to have been submitted, we have another $250,000, which you are correct, it takes us up to roughly that, my eyes aren't quite, quite as good nowadays, but right around 96%. But you are correct, there are other components that, that has.
We should have.
Correct. Good point.
Yep.
I agree, because even the total project, that line, the majority of people don't have, I don't have Ms. Waitman's background in, in finance, right? And so, I think a lot of people are in my boat, and when you look at this, it just says total project 94.5%, that looks like the final amount, and, and so that I do, I agree that this, this slide is very misleading, and so, to Ken's point, next time, to have a projected end, something like that, and even if it's a range, because I do know that things are fluid and you don't know necessarily how much things are going to cost, but to have a projected range of final amount, so that we can see that it, it is over budget. And, and to see, too, on this, maybe would have been helpful, what we did pull from Cooper Town to cover that.
Okay. We can do that, and I guess, on the note of the request to do a follow-up meeting, or start maybe, I, I threw out the opportunity of a court, maybe every three-month or a quarterly presentation on Cooper Town. Possibly what we do is a wrap-up presentation on Chatham Park, I would offer when we do do that, that Cooper Town presentation potentially to all of you.
I was going to comment that, you know, we want more frequent updates, but at the same time, we want, we don't want the information to seem, you know, so if we can find some way that we can really label, you know, what, this, this is just a, you know, on balance sheet or something.
Yeah. But.
We'll submit the active slide budget that we keep down, and what, what it is that will have real contingency dollars left. This all lags behind easily. I mean, up to three or four months, it'll lag behind. It depends on the, 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 the.
I was just going to follow, we're going to have the final, when will we have the final overrun numbers?
So, that's what I'm working on right now, trying to gather all the final costs. There are still, are some costs coming in, so I feel by the first October, October work session, we should be very, very close. Certainly by the end of October, for sure. But I'm pushing on getting any last trackers in right now, because this is always at the end, end of a project, all of a sudden, you have work that comes out of nowhere that you're, you know, already negotiating, wasn't real one of them, so that's kind of where at the tail, kind of start that, and hopefully, over the next four weeks, a lot of that gets weeded out.
The middle school project was also done, and it would be helpful to hear how that did in terms of getting finished and ready for school, and also what its budget, it's a much smaller portion of the overall, but.
Yes, that was 1.2-ish million, there were some change orders there, which are all included in this total project budget. Middle school wasn't a separate budget, it was encapsulated into this total project budget. But it, it did come down to the wire, but it got cleaned up and it opened up, there's a few little things to clean up, but it actually turned out well and was open for school on Tuesday. So, we, again, we have some punchless items to do there, but I think it, Dana was here, but they were, you know, able to open it and use it, so that was great.
They appreciate the extra space for all the middle schoolers.
Yeah, it's another 16 tables, so it's another 140, four kids can fit in there and really spread out that they need, so it worked out well.
I'd love to see in, in a future presentation like this, too, some, some updated pictures.
Sure.
So, I'm, I don't have a child at Chatham Park or the middle school anymore, and so I don't frequently go inside those buildings, and I can see the construction outside of Chatham Park and everything that happened, but it would be, it would be nice for us to see the changes that are done inside of the buildings and for the public as well.
I think, I, I think, based on the discussion, we're going to just do, you know, a brief update, we'll have a spreadsheet, and we'll do that at each, each work session, we can talk about that with a few pictures and progress.
And just looking forward, since we did transfer, it was $400,000 from Cooper Town to Chatham Park, can you just reiterate what contingency that remains at Cooper Town and what percentage of the project that is?
So, that, we have, Cooper Town had 1.3 million, so if, if it's all used, down to 900,000, so we'll do the same thing, we'll have a spreadsheet update, because there are, you know, changes that are occurring there already, regular things, so we'll, we'll include that at the next meeting as well.
I have one question, I, I, I still do have my son at, at Cooper Town, at Chatham Park rather, so I'm wondering, there are four days left in the, in, in schedule here for the, for, for the contract. At what point will we get down, I mean, there's still things that are not done there yet, fairly big things, there's the gym, I guess there's a large pile of dirt up front, I guess, I, I'm just curious from a timeline standpoint, at what point will be down, will be down to just pay two punchless items, to, to the stuff where it's, you know, going to be, I mean, like how far?
Until we can see the finish line, I mean, we're, we're, we're in there, it's operating, thank you very much for getting it all done, but there's some significant cleanup in the house that we didn't have. So, it was always in the project for the exterior, it was not going to be done until September 3rd, just because of the growing season and all that, so that pile of dirt is going to start moving within a week, and it will be gone probably in about two weeks from now, and then the contractors next week, or all the seed boxes are gone next week, all their tools, equipment, everything that you see in there. So, really, in, in two-ish weeks, it should, that should be very cleaned up, and so by the end of the month, it needs to be seeded, you know, hay thrown down, so that we have grass grown. So, we're going to leave the fence up for a while, just so, you know, it can start to, to grow, but that, that will really be the only thing. So, site work-wise, it, it will be very cleaned up. As far as finishing the work, so right now, the gym has about two to three more weeks of work, and then the key is the flooring goes in. So, the gym flooring, once that's done, we're going to open the gym, we're working on that projected kind of final schedule now, so that we can keep administration and the school, of course, informed. Then there will be some things that we'll have to finish on second shift or weekends in the gym, so the gym will probably truly wrap up at the end of October. But all punchless outside of the gym should be done in the next four weeks.
Just one other request, as we move forward and take lessons learned from Chatham Park and apply it to Cooper Town, I think the page seven of the slide deck that I have, that has the change order tracking document, and it has the columns for the reason for the change order, there's owner, unforeseen, omission, value added, or error, that kind of presentation, not necessarily every time, but when there are decisions that come to the board about approving the change orders and things to add, having that characterization, I think, is helpful and useful, because it looks.
Can you add that to our change order recommendation memo? What, what category falls under?
Right, what's driving it, because the board can't be responsible for unforeseen or errors and omissions and things like that, but the owner-driven ones, if those are more under discretion and having more of a view of how's the project going, what are the pressures on the contingency, is this the right choice to make with the remaining funds, I think would be helpful for us to control those things that we can.
Yes.
Any other comments or discussion on this facility update? Seeing none, Mr. Testa, did you have anything else for this portion of the agenda?
So, the next item, JR will come up in U.S. and up in on capital, these are 5-year capital, and we're looking out the next one.
Okay, I think that's under the finance portion of the agenda, so I will turn it back to Dr. King to move formally through the agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Waitman. So, for finance, which is for D, Dr. Shalton.
Thank you, Dr. King. We have two items for information and discussion. The second item will be for proposed action to September 18th meeting, but first up is state of the budget, and there are two presentations, the state of the budget from Mr. Testa, please, and the facilities plan from JR will be presented, wherever you want to go.
Well, good evening, and I just want to thank my whole staff, my supervisors, because without them, we want to got Chatham open. They did a great job, they even worked over Memorial Weekend, just so you know, to get it going. So, Dr. Hayes and Mr. Testa asked me to go back over our capital projects that we did the facility study a couple of years ago, so we're coming to the end of it. So, as you can see, it's like 25, 26, 26, 27, and then future, so we're pushing it three years, is what we got. I wouldn't recommend doing another facility study, because we know what our issues are. All the costs are estimates, there's a couple of things that I would say that there's a need, and like just at the high school, the controls, I've been talking about that, they all need to be upgraded, they're, they're seeing the end of life. The hot water system, the instantaneous hot water system that I put in 10 years ago, has seen an end of life, they're like two major ones, but Chatham, Chatham, Ches, no, Chatham, Cooper Town, Lynnwood aren't on here, so my advice, it would be, we need to look at the high school, middle school, Chesapeake Wall, Minowa. The high school and the middle school are probably the most expensive, so if you go to, what's that one? So, you go to the middle school, right now, we are doing a small roof replacement, Ken is. Ken is actually handling it for us over a section of the coral room. It was beyond repair, so we're, and you approved it, so we're doing that right now. But something we need really look to is next summer is look at the whole roof replacement of the middle school. It's something that is, no one can give us really the age of the roof, right?
I knew the middle school fifteen years ago, at least fifteen years old, extended to forty.
So.
Thirty plus.
Yeah, it's thirty plus, so the, the roof is a real need at the middle school. Of course, the mechanicals at the middle school and the high school are both in dire need too, they're starting to see, we've never addressed the high school mechanicals when we did the, the additions, the music, the free story and all the work there, we've never addressed them. So the mechanicals are big at the middle school and the high school. The other things are, you know, boiler replacements, you know, at the middle school, we've got five boilers in there, old oil boilers. So there's, there's a lot here, there's a lot to look at. Sure, things can get spread out, but it's something we need to start looking at now that the buildings, you know, all the other buildings got renovated.
Sorry, before you move on.
Sure. Go ahead.
And I apologize for my ignorance, but what do you mean by mechanicals?
Um, the air handlers, chillers, boilers, controls.
Like HVAC?
All the HVAC.
Okay.
All the HVAC, sorry.
While, while we're on the middle school, can you just talk about the gym D renovation? I thought gym D was recently renovated.
Oh, that's, that's my typo, should be gym A.B.
Okay, that makes more sense. That makes more sense.
Sorry, A.B.D. Yes, gym A.B.
The big gym, the.
The big gym. Just like the high school, baskets are seeing the, the end, they've been there for a long time. The, the bleachers are now becoming unreparable when they break down, so they're seeing the end of their life. So gym A.B. at the middle school, I'll change that, sorry, and the high school gym both need to be, to be looked at, to be renovated, need upgrades. So then you're gonna Chesapeake Wall, we got some roof, roof duct work to do up top, chiller's starting to see the end of its life, it's coming up, you know, twenty years, you know, twenty-plus years, you gotta start looking at your chillers. Chesapeake Wall gym's an old mondo floor, we've been upgrading to wood floors, it has the old mondo floor, so, and it's starting to see the end of life. Chesapeake Wall needs little upgrades, it's not a ton. We already, Chesapeake Wall, we're putting in the new boilers now, well, the one, the three-year-old boilers from Chatham are going into Chesapeake Wall right now. We upgraded the instantaneous hot water, so Chesapeake Wall's in a good shape. The roof eventually, casework eventually. All the generators that are left in the buildings that we haven't touched all need to start being looked at to get replaced because all the buildings that we have touched, we've all put new generators in it. Manoa's basically same way, chillers, we replaced our boilers last year, gym floor, they got an old mondo system, fire alarm systems, generator. Manoa and Chesapeake Wall are kinda a lot alike. And two, the roof, it's getting up there. So, you know, you can push some things out, but some things need to be looked at. And then Lake Oakmont, the building you're in here, boiler replacement, chiller replacement, exterior doors, control upgrade, generator, interior doors, roof replacement eventually. So there are, it's all the mechanicals that we need, starting to look into and the doors for safety and security and stuff and, you know, energy efficiency when we look at the boilers and the chillers. And then we come down to the M and T building, which is, it's in great shape, really, it's just the old bus garage where they fix the buses, the roof and the lot, the employee parking lot probably needs to be redone. Besides that, that building's in great shape. And then the big ones is the stadium. So the fencing really needs to be replaced around the band field. If you drive down Golf Road, just look at the fence, you'll see what I mean. The turf is gonna be, need to be replaced. It was ten years ago when I started, we put in the, the turf because it was a warranty issue before I got here, and AstroTurf, you probably remember, right? No, that one for you? So the, the turf did get replaced because there was more interest with AstroTurf, so it's been ten years. Turf, depending on its usage, ten to fifteen, twelve. So you're looking at a turf replacement coming up and our turf is used a lot. As you see, you guys all go to the games and stuff. Tennis courts, they need to be replaced, they're not in the greatest shape. And I think I missed, I didn't get it on there, should be on there, is the stadium lights. Stadium lights, I think I missed that time.
Is there any opportunity to resurface that quarter?
We've had them resurfaced, but now they're cracking and where it is, I think there was an old pool up there, so it's over, there used to be an outdoor pool back there, way back when. Somebody told me. I know who told me, but Blue Taylor, Mr. Taylor, who's our historian in the district, he told. So, but that's over, it's cracking, it's gonna need a replacement. But then you can look at the whole property and look at a whole complex. So not pick one or two, you might wanna look at the whole property as where the baseball fields, where the band field is. So you could do a lot and just put it as that one big project and look at it that way. The one thing I did miss, and I will put it on there, it's my fault, the stadium lights. I, I don't know how old they are. I know there's probably five or six lights out now. And you just don't go up there and change one or two bulbs, usually change them all. So you're looking at about a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar lighting upgrade to change all the stadium lights out. And nobody can give me a time on how old those lights are. So that's one thing I did miss up there. Sorry about that. I will put it on. So that's another big one, so you might wanna look at that whole area as one big project.
I have one, one question. So I happen to notice that as we're going along, we're kind of relying on our memory as to when, and I appreciate those that have been here longer than us, is there a list that exists that we can look up and say, we replaced the parking lot X, Y, Z year? And that way as a board, we're able to, to keep track of how often we're getting a light out of light fixtures or parking lots or turfs? I think that's helpful when making informed decisions in terms of repairs versus replacement, or do we go back to that same vendor again if it's not lasting a long time? So does something like that exist?
We have the facility study.
Right.
I have something for the ten years that what I did.
Okay.
Before me, no, there's nothing that we have. I have my ten years.
The facility study was with that.
Facility studies was what, five years ago?
Should have some of that.
Some of it, just to get some of the baseline.
I mean, I can give you the last ten years of what we've done with the facility study work, what I have done and put something together, but before ten years, you know.
We could just start somewhere, that we have a documented list, maybe something already exists. I don't wanna have to recreate, but I do think it's important that as a board and as a district, we have an idea of how long things are lasting.
Yeah, I, I can put something together at least. And then we can also, we know when Chesapeake Wall was built, we know when Manoa was built, so we do have that information and we can put something together.
Thank you.
No problem.
Looking at this plan, I'm wondering, is there any consideration for alignment to sustainability? One thing that's standing out to me is the turf replacement. I know, you know, companies can, they'll claim that the turf is recyclable when in fact it's not really true, and I don't even know if we've tested our turf before, but typically they have, can have heavy metals, lead, just different hazardous substances within them, which again, could potentially have impacts, not just on the environment, but also the players on the field. So I, I'm just wondering if there is sustainability alignment that we can do as we're considering capital needs.
It's something we can look into when we go to replace the turf, when we talk to different vendors. The only testing we do on the turf now is the G max, which is the compression, you know, when a, when a child falls, you know, when they're playing football or whatever, hit their head, that's all we do. But besides that, I couldn't give you that answer.
I think that would be an important consideration too, to know what the cost would be to not have turf and go to grass and what kind of upkeep that would be, because I do know in professional sports that there has been a move away from turf due to the concerns that Dr. Larson brings, but also other concerns, especially soccer players getting much more injured on turf than when they play on grass. But that wasn't actually my question. So I, I see Manoa and, and Chesapeake Wall on here, and when thinking about facilities, upgrades for them, I'm a little bit surprised to, to not see some sort of addition discussion, especially when it comes to Manoa. What I, and maybe this isn't true, you know, I'm not, I don't have a student at Manoa, I don't go into Manoa, but I hear a lot from the community that that, and I think from PTO meetings, that that building in particular is full, to say the least, and, and I think maybe overtaxed sometimes, and certainly doing their best to serve the students with what they have. But was there any consideration or, I know, I think we've discussed it before as a board, at least with, with regard to Chesapeake Wald, and I don't know that we've seen anything specifically with regard to Manoa.
Well, Manoa and Chesapeake Wall, we've done a lot of work inside to make a lot of room, like a lot of space, extra space. So we're pretty much maxed out at Manoa and Chesapeake Wall. I know Chesapeake Wall, and Ken, you can back me on this one, Chesapeake Wall, I think they did look at some sort of addition, but we didn't move forward, did we?
It's part of the facility study to add an addition, whether twelve thousand.
In the back.
In the back hill.
Yeah.
At the time, it was discussed.
Yeah.
Just, you know, we go with Cooper Town and Chatham and that Chesapeake Wall, we discussed a perfect amount of.
Yes, so there is a design out there?
Yeah, I remember, I think that was on the kindergarten playground back there, right?
Yes.
And that was Phil and the, right. And I guess my point is if we're discussing all these different facilities and certainly if we're discussing large issue, or not issues, but, you know, large expenditures with Manoa and Chesapeake Wall, I do think that potentially those should be part of the conversation as, you know, if there are roof replacements or something, well, are we about to put an addition on, does that need it? Those, those types of conversations I, I think should happen all together. And I don't think that we've ever done, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think we've done a study of Manoa and, and the, the capacity that we have there. I think that those are pretty recent issues, but I also think on the, what we see enrollment wise at Manoa, that it continues to be one of our highest enrolled schools, and I don't think that that is gonna change anytime soon.
Manoa, we never, we never looked at doing any kind of an addition there?
Yeah.
No.
I think it's a, it's a more recent issue, but it's one that I think has gotten exacerbated over time and doesn't seem to let up, at least that's what our, our study shows.
Well, you're, you're a hundred percent correct. If we wanted to look at Chesapeake Wall and Manoa with some sort of addition or something like that, a lot of these mechanicals can be put into it.
Yeah.
Because that's what we did at Cooper Town, that's what we did at Chatham, right? So we can put them into it and get the work done with the additions or the roof or whatever we wanted to do, because that's what we exactly did. But we never looked at Manoa. I know there's a, a design for Chesapeake Wall somewhere. I might have it, you probably have it.
I think we all have it, I think the board, the board has, I don't know whoever one that was, we have it.
You have it, so that's.
We're looking at that. And, and we, Chesapeake Wall, it seems like was having, wasn't having sustained increased enrollment.
Yeah.
That it does appear that potentially Manoa's having.
Yeah.
And so it's, you know, the changes that, that your team has done and that they've done there seem to be acceptable there. And I don't, I, I can't say that I know if that's true today or not, but that's, I think, what we decided when we went towards Cooper Town and Chatham instead.
I, top of my head, because I was running numbers for my staff because of our, our buildings have grown, our teachers, more teachers, more kids, so that means more staff for, for my people to clean these buildings. And I'm thinking Manoa's around seven hundred kids. I could be off. It is seven hundred. Yeah, so you're correct. I mean, it's something we can look at.
Was there some kind, maybe I'm, I mean, I may recall quickly here, but I thought when we looked at a study that there were things in Manoa that could be reconfigured to add more space. I seem to recall some, some conversation about that during our facility study. They were saying that, because, I mean, that, your point's well taken, that, that it's packed. I've heard Ken saying from, from parents as well. There was something in there though where they, when they redid it back in two thousand and eleven, ten, something like that, that the additional space, that was, that was unutilized. I, I could be wrong about that, but I thought there was some material.
We, we've taken all the space inside that is available.
Yeah.
And we've turned it into teaching spaces and everything.
I know people exaggerate, but people say working in closets and stuff, you know, I mean, it, it, Manoa seemed, I think this board should consider giving, giving Manoa facility some attention in that regard, just to understand what's going on inside the building and capacity and, and looking at that with enrollment figures and seeing, you know, understanding that it's, it might not get better.
I mean, that's something, sorry, we could look into.
Yeah, one of the things I was interested in was scheduling a tour with the board to see Chatham and progress at Cooper Town, and I think adding Manoa into that tour would be an interesting comparison because one of the goals of this, the capital plan that we've undertaken for the past years has been to add more parity across the buildings and the amenities, and it sounds like we may be back in a cycle where things are a little out of, out of balance in terms of space and amenities across the buildings.
I mean, it's a good idea, take a walk, we used to do that years ago, go through the buildings, and that's something we can look at.
I have a question, because I, I think we've talked about feasibility studies numerous times. As a newer member to the board, I would love to, to see that. Like I would love to see if it's somewhere, if it's a hard copy, and I would also like to see, because I wasn't here for whatever study or consideration was given to Manoa, I would love to see that also. So are those documents someplace where the board has access? Can we get a binder?
I, I have one, I have my, on my desk. He's got, you got electronically, yeah?
Thank you.
I think it makes sense to just resend to everyone, so everyone has, as, we're all working off of the same thing.
I wanted to comment on, there, there's a strong push in the community for full day kindergarten, and, and so just to add to the pressure, you know, to look at Manoa and, you know, the facilities parity that you, you mentioned, but I, I think looking long term, you know, it, we're sort of an outlier in terms of not having full day kindergarten in the area. But that's gonna require more expansion, more classrooms and things like that.
I mean, we could, you know, do a study on Manoa and see what we could do, so, you know, if you guys want, I mean.
Well, and I think you pronounced it, full day kindergarten is actually, I think it's, it passed, that was the agenda, I think, for this, like mandate that at, at some point. It's, it, it, it's, it's in pass, but definitely something that's in the radar and probably come down the pipe, so. If you're trying to consider it, I think, since we're looking at facilities, I think it makes sense to, 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 to look at wholesale upgrade as opposed to.
And JR, could you have one more slide?
We haven't gotten to the bottom line yet.
We haven't gotten to the bottom line, that was gonna.
Ah, we didn't get to the bottom, yeah, we didn't get to the bottom line. So we did this one. So we're gonna have to add like seven fifty to the bottom line because of the lights. The other one, this is always in the facility study and it's always a discussion. So we do own property on Havreford Road, which are, is our, like, storage for everything. It's right next to, now we're going back.
DMI.
DMI, thank you, thank you. And then we have that small garage, it's home of Manoa's property. We have outgrown both properties, both properties are in bad shape. As you can see, they, Crabtree Road Book basically demoed the building. So that's something we need to look into because, yeah, we've out, we've outgrown the M and T building between both departments, transportation and facilities. The Havreford Road building is in very bad shape. And then the garage, you can see it at Manoa is pretty much bad shaped. So that's something you guys gotta discuss where facilities can call home one day. There it goes. Wow, I'll read it over here. So the, the bottom line is, so for twenty twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six, you're looking at nine point three million, twenty-six, twenty-seven, eight point four million and beyond. 8.4 million, and beyond is 16.7. So.
And then beyond category, just to maybe get a little bit more clarity, is, that does pass the two, that's beyond the two-year?
It's beyond the five, the facility study, so.
It's beyond the facility study, but it's something you've identified is needing.
I mean, it's something we have to look at, what is really, you know, what, what I feel's needed, what you feel's needed, and what the district could afford to do.
And JR, just to clarify, and speaking of the, the total summary, when you're saying total 25, 26 of that nine, that would be inclusive of doing every project directly on the schools listed?
Yeah.
Obviously, given certain financial constraints, if we had to make decisions, it wouldn't necessarily be the full nine million.
Yes.
But that is under the consideration of every single thing each year.
Correct.
And JR, I know we've talked about this at other Finance and Facilities Committee meetings, but, and I know this is like a summary presentation, but it is helpful when the board is making decisions to like understand what the driver of some of these are. Is it the mechanicals are at the end of their useful life, you've tried to repair them and they're limping along? Is it a safety and a security issue? Is it an opportunity for, I know there's a question about sustainability, that factors into lots of these things with HVAC, the lighting, things like that, but trying to identify what is making these the priorities, I think, is, is helpful and, and just kind of impetus, because this is outlining another significant wave of capital investment, and, you know, how do we prioritize that and try to do the investments in a timely way to be able to protect the ongoing operations of our schools and, you know, the safety and comfort of our students and staff? But it would, yeah, it would help as we dig in further to kind of see what the benefit and the driver of this list is and, and kind of coming up with this timeframe.
Okay, but you're, you're 100% right. I always look at, I always look at energy efficiency, safety and security of the buildings. The bottom line.
I think related to that, if we become aware of any grant funding, I know in the past there's been security, safety and security grant funding, if those things become available within a certain timeframe, maybe some of these, I know 26, 27, in the future, it is going to be pushed up because the money is available now.
Mm-hmm.
Knowing grant money is scarce, but maybe some bucket will make itself known.
I will notice that, that on the proposed policy review calendar, there's a policy for advertising and sponsorship, and it did occur to me if some of the things around our community amenities, like the stadium space and, and others like that, would be opportunities for sponsorship.
Hopefully, once the state budget is passed, they are supposed to put money in the capital improvement grants. So that would give us the opportunity, once that comes out, to maybe identify some of these projects that will qualify, and we can kind of jump on that opportunity if those funds are, are available.
Any other questions or comments from the board for JR? Okay, so perhaps we'll move on to Mr. Testo to, again, the budget update.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
And also thanks very much to your effort with Chatham.
Thank you.
So tonight, I'm just going to touch on three financial years, but I'm going to keep it brief, I just have a little bit to touch on for each of the years that we're going to look at. So as far as the 25, 26, but that's not the one, let me go back one, I guess that's the one. As far as 25, 26 budget state impact, this kind of gives us where we are preliminarily, we're looking at ending 24, 25. Obviously, we still have the audit that will be coming up, but this just kind of gives us a picture of what fund balance looks like and what that capital reserve looks like within those, within the fund balance. The net impact to the fund balance at this point is a deficit of 1.341 million, and that's something we had anticipated, because part of that is for the capital projects where we have funds reserved specifically committed in the fund balance for capital projects. So that is somewhat anticipated, but we did have favorable results as of now, prior to doing the audit, that have been favorable operations in the district. And just to note that, you know, fund balance would be completed by December, when the audit is presented to the board, and then the board makes that acceptance at that voting, at the action meeting. But what this shows, that we began the 24, 25 fiscal year with a fund balance of 19,384, and we're going to settle the year in total fund balances at a little over 18 million. And the nice part is that the unassigned fund balance is unchanged, it's really just your capital that has some movement in it, and you're also able to reserve the portion to balance the 25, 26 budget in that as well. When we look at the 25, 26 budget and we look at what's left in fund balance, if we start, if we're starting off the year with a fund, unassigned fund balance of 10.8 million, that's going to leave us at about 6.8%. And I know within our fund balance policy, we're looking at between 5 and 8% to stay, so that does keep us in that comfortable category. If you consider your budget and break it over a daily rate of 365, basically, the district would spend a little over $436,000 on a daily basis. So if we were to take our unassigned fund balance and divide it by that number, it leaves us with about 24.92 days of fund balance. And really, the reason we stress that is because, you know, the, our reserves are vital to managing any unexpected changes, similar to what we're going through now with a state budget impasse, any emergency repairs or any economic downturns. So it's important to know that, you know, that we really want to hold that money aside for those one-time items. And then if you consider 24.92 days out of a month, we really have about 83% of one-month's expenditures on hand, in the event that there were something dramatic that happened. So to know that, that it's not a excessive number, you're kind of within that. And then just noticing as well, if we take those expenses and look at it on a monthly basis, it's about $13 million that we spend on a month, which would be 8.2% you would need to reserve in order to cover a month's expenses. And right now, with PDE, we are eligible to hold 8%. So just to know that truly, we would, we would need more than what we're allotted if we had to cover a month's worth of expenditures. And then talking about the current year budget, so we are without a state budget right now, so the, there are items that we have received and items that are on hold. So right now, our property tax relief payment has been received, and I, I would imagine, because that's a number that's certified based on the gaining revenue early on when we do the budget, so we know that, that dollars, those dollars are due to the district. Other items that we have not seen yet are your basic ed funding, your special ed funding, transportation, social security, and retirement, but the one notification we did get from Peers this week is that districts will not be responsible for making the Commonwealth portion payment of the Peers retirement. So that 50% we don't have to make until we are made whole by the state of Pennsylvania for their commitment for the Peers, for our Peers share. So just to know that that's out there, but, and that's, the, the good part is that we are about 86% collected on tax revenue, so for us, we're, we're a district that's favorable as far as not getting these state revenues right now, because we do have a significant tax base that we are receiving taxes on on a regular basis. So there's no concern there that we would need to go for any kind of tax anticipation loan or something like that to cover expenditures from payroll to any kind of supplies or repairs needed in the district. And then just looking at a budget forecast for the upcoming fiscal year, as we get ready to prepare for that, the base index has been certified at 3.5% by the state, that was published on just this week. And so just to know that tax revenue, so even though if we were to increase taxes, it would be less of a tax increase if it were at 3.5% compared to the four that we did this year. So just to give you an idea of resources, that additional 5% gave us about $581,000 in additional resources, just considering the, the total assessed value of properties that we have now. Taxpayers would see a difference of about .0945 mils, but again, this is just showing a less of an increase, not necessarily a tax decrease, just to kind of make that distinction for taxpayers.
Can you just explain to me how we would increase, like, let's say we could increase up to 3.5%, but that would lead to a decrease of $581,000? I don't understand.
So I kind of took it as if you were looking at the current fiscal year that we're in, where we increase taxes by 4%, if we only had the ability to do three and a half, you would have 581,000 less in resources to work with. So not necessarily that.
The budget would still go up, but it wouldn't go up by as much?
Correct.
Okay.
Less of an increase.
Okay.
Right. Sure.
Less revenue, basically, right?
It would be less revenue, yes, if you were to tax to that maximum index, yes.
Technically, more revenue, but not as much of an increase as we had last year.
Yes, correct.
Right, so. Mm-hmm. And this doesn't factor in one of the issues that we had in putting together this year's budget, that the 4% Act One index and our tax increase was eroded by a decrease in the assessed value within the township.
Right. We haven't seen a large amount of assessments come since that point, but the taxpayers do have that ability, but the Commonwealth ratio kind of moving in a direction that's not in our favor, but we have not seen that change in assessment.
Okay.
And that's all I had had for this evening, just to kind of give you a brief update of where we are and where we're looking to go.
On your slide two, I just wanted to be sure I'm clear, because I just recently joined the board.
Yes.
But, so effectively, we're balancing the budget the last two years by transfers to the general fund, is that correct? I think that's what you said.
So for the last years, that's how we've adopted the budget. We were fortunate this year that we didn't have to rely heavily on our fund balance to do that. We had favorable variances. It's really just where you're moving your committed fund balance over to your capital projects. So that's where you're seeing that, that movement.
And that as the fund balance tightens, which happens when we have this negative impact of fund balance over the years, then that restricts our ability to allocate dollars to the exact list of projects that JR just outlined. Like, some of those may have been things that we say, oh, we'll use some of our surplus funds, our capital allocated dollars to take care of some of these projects as they arise. But when our fund balance is trending down, we have less flexibility to allocate dollars to that, and means that we'd have to go out and raise dollars, like raise bonds to fund those kinds of projects.
Right, if you were to, to kind of lump them as larger projects, but with not being, not having to touch the unassigned fund balance this year, that would be, that's beneficial in order to be able to move, to think about moving funds towards those projects.
That's good, it's nice to see the general fund surplus.
Yes, absolutely. Okay, that's all I have.
Any additional questions or comments for Mr. Testo on the state of the budget?
I know it's only September, but you mentioned that we expect an audit in December?
Yes, so the auditors will be out in the beginning of, at the December work session to give a draft of the budget, of the audit, and then at the action meeting, we will actually accept the budget.
And with those figures, we're able to have a more of a basis for looking at starting the budgeting process for next year.
Yes, and that would give you the ability to say, you know, here's what we have in fund balance, and do we want to move money over to capital service? That would give you that confidence to know that they were confirmed numbers.
Okay. If there are no further questions or comments on the state of the budget, the second item under finance is our two, for discussion and information and for proposed action at the September 18th meeting, our two contracts related to federal Individuals for Disability Education Act grants that will be passed through from the DCIU, and Mr. Testo, if you want to add any comments on the contracts.
So these are. So these are funds that we get for the services provided to, in the special ed program. There's specific purposes that we can spend the funds on, and this is just the board's acknowledgement of, of receiving those funds. And what we do is, when we make the expenditures, we actually send an invoice to the Delaware County Intermediate Unit based on the parameters of the program, and then we get reimbursed for the spending of those funds. And we have till June 30th to spend those funds.
Questions or comments?
The one, really, $1,788? So generous.
That's it.
All right, if there are no further questions or comments, that concludes the Finance Committee portion of the agenda, and I'll pass it back to Dr. Pease.
Thank you, Dr. Shelton. That takes us to Section 5, other items. 5A is 2025, 2026 school calendar revision, and I will turn it over to Dr. Hayes.
Thank you. This is just an update to the calendar, reflecting the change of Teacher and Service Day from May 12th to May 19th, due to the local primary elections. So with that change on the calendar, just putting it on the board members' radar for that information as it will come up next, at the next board meeting on the 18th for action.
Thank you. If there are no questions regarding, I'll keep going.
Just to clarify, so the primary election date changed, which is why we're not changing the calendar, is that?
When we make the calendar, the primary election's not available for us.
I see.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're going to continue. For 5B, PSBA officer candidates, I'm actually going to ask our PSBA liaison just to shed any light there, Sweden.
So the PSBA is looking for its officers and has gone through a process of having volunteers and people step up, so there is an opportunity for our board to vote for this slate of candidates. There is one from our local eastern zone, a representative, a school board member from Chester Upland, and then the others are statewide offices that people in PSBA have stepped forward for, and they're seeking our vote and endorsement in their officer elections.
One thing I will say, I, I, I didn't, I, I didn't know the individual from Chester Upland School District, I think it's Dr. Morales or Ms. Morales, I, I forget, but um, Dr. Shelton, I think, has, has some connection with her as well, she's very, very impressive. I'm a fan of her, she, she's spoken at, at, at a number of legislative events, and I think she'd be a great person for, for this area.
I believe she's co-chair of the Legislative Council.
She's co-chair of the council.
For the, for Delaware County. She's, yeah, she's very, you know, she's a very passionate individual.
Very knowledgeable, if I caught my attention, I was.
So then this would be up for the board to vote at our next meeting.
Just to clarify, these are non-competitive races or elections? It looks like there's just one.
There's just one for each spot, yep.
Great, thank you. Section 6, report on executive sessions, though the board did meet tonight before this evening's meeting to discuss with Council Two confidential personnel-related matters. Section 7 brings us to the second portion of public comment for the evening. The second section of public comment, you may make a comment or statement about any school-related topic. I did have three individuals that signed up to speak for this session of public comment. The first person I have listed is Rich McGlorry. And just a reminder that you'll have three minutes to speak. At the start, Mr. Tester will start a timer there, and at the end of your three minutes, I do ask that you would conclude your remarks. You should state your name and confirm your residency.
My name is Rich McGlorry, I live at 1246 St. Road, Haverford Town, Pennsylvania.
Thank you.
Okay, and, and tonight, I just want to follow up. Okay. And and tonight, I just want to follow up and finish what I talked about at the last meeting about the, you know, resolution of special ed issues. A central point in the article is that the school districts refuse to adjust the reading curriculum and methodology to fit the needs of the students. Instructional leadership is a collaborative process. It is not an adversarial process, and when it becomes adversarial, it breaks down collaboration, which hurts our students. We are all learners in this. Most everyone here knows that I am a strong advocate for a reading specialist for our autistic support students and my autistic grandson. As a late talker, he's he still is at the beginning stage of reading development. He has made little progress in reading since he left Manoa Elementary School, where he had a reading specialist and attended the middle school last year. Okay? He did not have a reading specialist, and he did not progress in reading development. Every day without a reading specialist is a lost opportunity for Johnny to gain an essential concept for his development of his reading ability. That cannot be replaced. Reading ability is a complex process which requires children to develop cognitive structures in their brains, which build upon each other to develop reading ability. Over time, children develop the ability to read. There is no quick fix. Each autistic child has different needs and requires instruction specifically designed and created to meet his or her individual needs and unique interests, abilities, and background of experience. Authentic materials at each child's instructional level are essential. Instruction at a child's frustration level is harmful to children and causes avoidance behaviors. Back in the day when I taught reading at University High School in Philadelphia from 1975 to 1995, that's how old I am, we provided every student with a reading disability, a reading class taught by a certified reading specialist that was required by Title I regulations then. We were so much smarter then than we are today. Our students receive small class instruction for a full period every day for a full year. That is what is necessary for struggling readers to make adequate yearly progress in reading. That is what Johnny needs. That is what I did for 20 years of my life. Now, to sum up very quickly, in our, in our reading classes, we had all types of students, special ed students, dyslexic students, English language learners, and typically developing students. We provided formative assessment at the beginning of the year, ongoing assessment throughout the year, and summative assessment at the end of every year. That is what Johnny needs. That is what all of our children with reading disability need. It is our moral responsibility to provide them with that opportunity. All children have the right to learn to read. All children have the right to be provided with every opportunity and resource that they need to learn to read. Johnny does not have a reading specialist this year. It is in his IEP, and I am going to enforce his right to a reading specialist. And if he doesn't have it already, I will go to the Legislature and this Department of Education and ask them to design a regulation requiring exactly what I said here today.
Thank you.
I am not going to stand by and watch my little Johnny go through our school district and never learn to read. That is not happening in my lifetime. Thank you.
So, Dr. Hines, I would just ask that if appropriate, a member of the administration would follow up. So for the second person that signed up, I had Joe Arena. And the third person I have is Carol Taylor. All right, that concludes the list of those signed up for public comment for this evening. The next regular board meeting is scheduled for September the 18th, 2025, at 7:30 PM in the boardroom of the Oakmont Administration Building. I'll accept a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Move to the second.
Move to the second. Thank you. The meeting is adjourned.